I'll call to order our public work session for today. Welcome, everybody, folks that are joining us here in the meeting, our citizens and city staff. Also want to acknowledge Mr. Carter, he's back with us. Good to see you back, sir.
Thank you.
Attorney Levonda Graham-Williams.
Yes, sir.
And our deputy city clerk, Ms. Anita, who is stepping in for us, Ms. Anita Sharar. Thank you, guys, for being here and want to acknowledge my colleagues on council. With that, Anita, would you please call to roll?
Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Dr. Dawson.
Present.
Mr. Hugel.
Present.
Mr. Vice Mayor Moody.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Mr. Carter, sure you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, tonight, we have a couple of presentations, both by Parks and Recreation Department. First one is, okay, recap some of the things that's happening with our summer programs. I want to make sure that you guys are aware of what's happening around your city for our summer camps and different programs that Parks and Recreation Department is putting on. Second presentation is going to be about the City Park Master Plan. I think that's been going around a little bit, and we need some direction on how to kind of move that forward as we get into the last stages of that. The first one is our summer camp, I mean, our summer recreation program. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate having this opportunity. So, we're going to go through a bevy of summer programs, and, of course, we'll not be reading every single one out to you all. You should have them in your PowerPoint in your packets. To start, a quick overview. So, Summer Raise, Summer Camp, right, is one of many, and I have that listed first because that's usually the first thing people think of whenever they think summer programs in Portsmouth. It is our largest undertaking, but it's not our only undertaking. So, throughout the presentation, you'll see we do have activities for all. That's all ages, all backgrounds, all interest levels. They are at various locations throughout the city, and also would like to make sure you all have a copy of the program guide, if you do not already. And, turn your mic, please. Thank you. So, moving forward, jumping right into the big ones, Summer Raise, right? This is our largest one. We are at eight different sites this summer throughout the city. These include recreation centers, like Neighborhood Recreation Center, which has our teen and youth camp, which has Cavalier Manor Recreation Center, Craddock Recreation Center, which is a specialized camp for therapeutic recreation, and then we also partner with Portsmouth Public Schools to offer the camp in four of their locations. This year, we were able to get in Craddock Elementary, West Haven Elementary, Churchland Middle, and Churchland Primary. Additionally, this year, we expanded a little bit to get in some of these other areas of the city that don't traditionally have programming, so we are partnering with PRHA, we are enlisted in place, and we have also partnered with London Oaks. As I put this presentation together, London Oaks was thriving, however, they do have an AC issue right now, so that one is on pause at the moment, and we're trying to make sure that those kids have another location, one of these locations to get to in the meantime. But, the theme this year is Space Invaders, so it's all about space, doing a lot of STEM activities. There's weekly themed activities, there's games, arts and crafts, field trips, swim lessons, and a whole host of other activities. We also provide free breakfast and lunch through our summer food service program. That is breakfast and lunch at all these sites, plus additional ones that we'll get to later. And then, this year, we're trying to expand some additional hours, especially for the teens. Neighborhood Facility Rec Center and Cavalier Manor Rec Center, this coming Monday, we plan to start offering additional hours in the evenings from 6:00 to 8:00, to make sure that they have somewhere to go during that time period, which is, you know, a very crucial time period to have positive activities in the city. Moving on, our senior station. So, I did mention we have activities and programs for all ages, including our elderly population. Some of the big ones we have are listed here, which are AARP driving classes. We have our senior transportation program, which we actually go and pick up seniors, bring them to the center. We go on outings and trips, make sure they get to the store, to medical appointments as needed. We've partnered with several different businesses, including Healthier 757 this year, for some fitness classes, and also the Tidewater Arts Outreach Program, which they come to the senior station free of charge and offer visual arts and programming arts. And then, of course, we do have some of our city holidays and national holidays that we celebrate there. We've had Follers Day recently, we did Juneteenth, and we just had our Fourth of July celebration. This is not a complete list. If you look in the program guide and you go under senior programs, you'll see that daily things they have going on there, like choir practice, Bible study, monthly birthday bash, table games, billiards, so there's a whole host of activities for these seniors to take advantage of. Grant programs. So, beginning with our largest one, which is the USDA Summer Meals Program. That is available Monday through Friday. Again, it's breakfast and lunch, served in various locations throughout the city. We're actually at 42 locations this year. It's up from 37 from last year, and we only began this June 16th, right? Right when summer really begins and kicks off, and just in the month of June, from June 16th to June 30th, we were able to serve 23,000 meals, just in that timeframe. Last summer, we were right around 75,000 for the whole summer. We also have our CACFP Meals Program. That kind of bridges a gap. It's during the school year, but it also is the first part of the summer and then the last part of the summer, when our USDA program is not operating. And then, lastly, grant programs is Youth Leadership Development. This is a CDBG program that we've offered for years. It is the first Saturday of every month at J. E. Parker Recreation Center, but in addition to that first Saturday, there's also other things throughout the month, including trips to Richmond, trips to DC. They were just at the Kennedy Center on Juneteenth and got to see a presentation there, so it's a very good CDBG-funded program. Scuttlebutt has it that the CDBG funding is going to be cut, or has been cut, in his latest federal bill, so that is something we'll need to look into to be able to continue this worthwhile program. It does help a lot of youth and their parents, especially ones that have gotten in trouble, either with the law or at school, so it's a very good program and is part of a rehab process.
And, just to add to that, we did have a correspondence with all the United States Conference of Mayors regarding the CDBG funding perhaps being cut, so there is active advocacy going on in Washington, and I talked to Congressman Scott as well. They're trying to hold that off, so there is an effort to stop that.
I hope we can do that, and I appreciate the information. Moving on, summer program food locations. Again, we are at 42 sites. You see all these, some of these are our sites, they're summer program sites, some of them are churches, some of them are other daycare centers. The big thing to take away from this is any child, 5 to 18, can go to any one of these sites and get breakfast and lunch, right? You do not have to be part of the program. It is an open-door program, so that means even if someone in the community just wants to come for the feeding part of the program, they can do that. On to nature. So, we do have two nature parks in the city. Paradise Creek Nature Park on Victory Boulevard, in the heart of industry, you don't even know it's there until you come upon it. It's a great little tucked-away park, roughly 40 acres, two miles of walking trails, and about 11 acres of restored wetlands. They have programs throughout the summer, includes bird walks, volunteer service days, blackberry foraging, along with edible garden that they have there that continues to grow and grow every year. And then, there are some junior programs, like Junior Ornithology. It is one of the national recognized bird-watching locations in America, and then they do field trips throughout the summer as well for a lot of these daycare locations, do some outdoor Our other nature preserve, Hawthorne Creek Wildlife Preserve, in the Churchland area off of Quinn Pine Grove, it spans about 142 acres and has three miles of walking trails. There is all kinds of activities to do throughout the summer. One of their big ones is kayaking, so they do have different kayaking guides that they have come out and provide programs. You do not have to go through one of these programs. If you're a kayaker and you have your own gear, you're able to come out there whenever the park is open and take advantage of the kayak launch, but they also do bird watching, meditation, they have yoga, and they have a lot of wildlife sightings that they have throughout the summer as well. A lot of people do not realize, but the local Virginia Cooperative Extension Office also falls under Parks and Recreation. That is the 4A program, so they have camps throughout the summer that they offer and specialty programming, like cooking basics, fishing basics. We have a family consumer sciences worker out there, so they're doing a lot of the nutrition-based counseling and nutrition-based programs. Of course, horticulture is one of the big things you think of when you think of Virginia Cooperative Extension, master gardeners, there's pollinator workshops, all kinds of financial planning and food prep classes. Not only that, but they also tell you how to identify things that are in your yard that might be weeds or not weeds, or edible or not edible, and then they will actually test your soil, so if you need to get a sample of your soil tested, you bring it there, they send it off to Virginia Tech, and it comes back with all the information related to it.
Where is located the Virginia Cooperative Extension?
Cooperative Extension is on Utah Street. It is right in the middle of a neighborhood, so if you're on Airline Boulevard, you can get there pretty quickly. Moving on to golf, we have golf programs at Bydewee and at City Links. Some of these that are, they're fairly big, are the PGA Hope. This is one for veterans and active-duty military. A lot of times, folks that are in the military and come back from overseas, they might have PTSD issues, and this program is specifically designed to help those folks reintegrate and really just be able to relax and calm down a little bit at certain times of the year. Our PGA professional, Adam Rayland, was recently recognized nationally for this program. We have our Portsmouth City Amateur Championship. We have PGA Junior Leagues, which one is actually currently going on this week, and we have some additional ones planned at the end of the summer. Same with the ladies-only clinics, we have some going on this week with some additional ones planned at the end of the summer. We have Adaptive Golf Clinic Series through the Virginia State Golf Association, and one of the really new or recent ones is the Bank of America Golf With Us Program. We were selected as one of only 25 courses throughout the nation to be able to provide this, and it's to introduce kids to the game of golf, many of whom have never even touched a golf club before. We had about 60 or so kids from the Boys and Girls Club of Southeast Virginia out at Bydewee, and it was completely funded by Bank of America. In addition to this, we have Friday Night Mixers, and upcoming, we have partnered with the First Tee Program of Hampton Roads to be able to provide some additional guidance and support out at City Link. So, we have two other recreation centers we had not talked about yet, and we do not have traditional summer camp at these centers. It's more of a drop-in site, that way, if you're not able to get in a summer camp, or if that's just not a child's interest, they still have activities to come and take part in every day, in addition to, you know, typical things like volleyball, basketball, taking part in the fitness center. There is a whole host of programs that they do throughout the summer, and they also try to theme it based on our summer camp theme of Space Invaders, so there's a lot of different STEM activities going on, and just really a lot of fun. The staff out there does a fantastic job programming. They're out there Monday through Friday and on Saturdays, making sure that, you know, any kid that wants to participate in some activities has that option. Next, we have the Sports Parks Recreation Center. That is the other one that we have that is a drop-in center. This is for some of the older teens, so if you're 13 and up, you can come there without a parent, and we have things for the seniors, things for adults, so it's not just youth-based, right? Senior aerobics and line dancing twice a week. We have pickleball that we have open a couple of times a week as well, and on Saturdays. The fitness room is open to anyone with a recreation membership. And then, another youth-related one is the Portsmouth Warriors Boxing Club, which has done pretty well. It's Monday through Wednesdays. Ages 8 to 17 are able to participate in that, and the only cost there is a $20 annual membership to United States boxing. Of course, there's no charge for youth to join our recreation centers. And then, something new we've added is archery, so we do it indoors at the facility. We have all the gear set up, and it's a certified instructor that has gone through the course in Richmond, and it has become wildly popular recently. Also, under Parks and Recreation's umbrella, are athletic associations. We have Churchland Soccer, Golden Ball Soccer, that do camps and clinics throughout the summertime. We have several football groups that are, either have summer leagues or also provide camps and clinics. Churchland Football and Cheer, Cavalier Manor and Bruins, and then our newest one is the Virginia Gators Football League. In addition to that, Little League Baseball and Softball throughout the summer has camps and clinics whenever the season technically ends in July. Moving on, on days like today where it's 96 degrees and the heat index is even higher, you can come and beat the heat at one of our two aquatic sites. We have our Cavalier Manor Swimming Pool at 404 Viking Street, right next to Cavalier Manor Rec Center, and Neighborhood Facility Splash Park on 900 Elm Avenue. Splash Park is free, and the swimming pool is only $1 per day. And lastly, we have special events, so also a summer program. I know a lot of you are familiar with these. Our Sunset Thursdays is very popular. We get anywhere between 2,000 and 5,000 people out every Thursday to Festival Park. We have our annual Back-to-School Batch coming up in August, on August 10th. We had our Shagging on High Fourth of July Celebration just this past weekend, and then we have our annual Coast Guard 5K and 10K Race coming up August 2nd, in addition to partnering with the Police Department for National Night Out. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Just a question on the Little League softball, baseball. What's the female-to-male ratio? There, what's it?
They do a very good job making sure that all people have access. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I could definitely get it for you.
Suppose you have some employees were very interested in the girls' side, they feel like they have not been, could not get enough information, have tried to direct them to you, but thank you very much.
Yes, and just for clarification, all the leagues are part of Little League National, right? So, Olive Branch, Cavalier Manor, Churchland, so they are required to offer softball and baseball.
Thank you. This is an incredibly comprehensive program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmerchuk. It is a lot of programs here, and, you know, our city has, you know, kept energized through the programming from Parks and Rec, so thank you for all that you do and your department does. It's a lot to coordinate. I do want to, I wanted to know more about the Virginia Cooperative Extension, and I just tried to, like, foresee as a user, can I go on our website? Can I find these programs to sign up? And I couldn't, but I also could be user Eric. How do, how do our citizens and community find out and sign up for these programs?
It's a great question. So, one of two ways, easy ways, online, if you go to PortsmouthParks.com, that's the Parks and Rec website, there is a link for Virginia Cooperative Extension right from that page at the top, and then, Cooperative Extension, of course, being part of Virginia Tech, they also have their own website that has its programs listed.
At the top of our page on Portsmouth Parks and Rec?
PortsmouthParks.com.
PortsmouthParks.com, I mean, yeah, I don't, maybe it's because I'm using my cellphone.
Could be.
I see it on my iPad.
And so, that might be, most people, you know, are operating from their cellphone. I know this is always in my hand. I just wanted to make sure it was easy to find. I could not on my mobile site find it easily, but it might be. So, if we can make our sites more also mobile-friendly, and that might not be directed towards you, I'll direct that towards Mr. Carter, okay? That whatever we see on our iPad and our computer that is easy accessible, because all of our families don't have, you know, laptops or computers, but most people have a cellphone, and that's how they'll find these programs, and I think this is such a large offering of programs, I want to make sure that all our citizens can sign up for those. And then, also, what was my other question? The summer program locations, I did see that on the mobile site, that we can, you know, provide that out to our youth. Oh, and then for the summer golf, that's what it was. I did click on golf on our site, and it leads you to Bydewee, so it's like for more information. So, are all of these programs kind of out of Bydewee and then some at City Park? Like, who kind of coordinates that effort for signup for those programs?
So, that is through either the City Links Pro Shop or the Bydewee Pro Shop. You can sign up for either course programs at either one. Also, if they contact us at the main office here at City Hall, we're able to help assist them with that.
Okay, okay. That, that process also was a little clunky, not here, I tried it before, just for the Bydewee, so I'm all about making sure that ease of signup is one of, you know, user experience for our sites to signup, so that people, we can get more and more participants to utilize this, and it's also helpful for our youth for that as well, so thank you. And then, I have a separate question I'll ask at another time concerning the London Oaks location you mentioned, that still has no AC. That's just concerning. I know that it's privately owned, but something I think we should discuss at a later time as well. Thank you.
So, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Palmerchuk, and I'm, I did the exact same thing that Councilwoman Thomas did, which was I jumped on and thought, where, where can I find these programs? Because this is, I know you guys do an amazing job with your programming, and just going to reiterate the point, that as a parent, what you want is a central location to find. I need summer activities for my kids, and, oh, I didn't book anything for August, what's, what's still available? So, not only Parks and Rec, but we talked at the last meeting a little bit about the Portsmouth United Programming, too, which, again, is new, so that's still launching, but if we had a spot on our website from maybe April on, where parents could go and find all summer programming linking to all of the opportunities, it would just make things tremendously, tremendously easier for organizing summer schedules, so, and then we, if we could promote that, that would be fantastic. And to that point, with golf, as you know, I have three golfers, we love the golf program. Adam Rayland is fantastic with children. He is a gem for that golf course. We have done the City Park, the City Links Golf Camp, which is actually how we got started with golf. You have to go to the Pro Shop and get a paper registration form and write a check or give cash, which it just needs to be updated. And that program really gets passed around through word of mouth, and it's, it's been a wonderful intro program for kids, and it's, it's always full, but again, to accessibility, having some kind of online registration process for that, and so that you don't have to drive out and pick up the paper and, and bring a check would be very helpful. Is there...
Is that the PGA Junior Clinic?
No, that's, that's actually different. So, the City Link, the Links at City Park Camp is just a little clinic that's a few weeks out of the summer, and a couple, couple sessions. PGA Junior League is a national program, right, that comes to Bydewee, so the signup process is more formalized, they get a uniform, it's, it's an actual league, and Adam does a great job of expanding that for the kids and inviting kids to come and out of the league practice times. Sorry, I just lost my train of thought with that. Oh, is, did we, is there anything in the budget for adding staff to the golf programming? Because I, I know we used to have the ladies' clinics, I have not seen them lately, maybe they're coming back on, but they're doing a tremendous amount of work over there, and it would be helpful to have more hands on the golf programming, and maybe that comes back to our discussion of City Park and what we're doing with golf in the city. I love that we're bringing in kids that have never had the opportunity to golf. It's a skill that you can take throughout adulthood, so I think it's a really great sport to introduce kids to and sort of take the edge off of it, because it's, it's intimidating. But, somebody else over there at Bydewee or at City Links that would add to the program would make, you know, us able to bring in more kids and, and serve the programming better, I think. So, I don't know if we budgeted for that, or if that's something that we can talk about moving forward, somebody to...
I'll take a recommendation from Mr. Palmerchuk, if we need additional staff there, but I ask him to evaluate it and give us some recommendations.
Okay, yep, maybe like a...
And just another comment is, we're in the process of redesigning our full website, so some of the things that you're talking about, we'll make sure that we incorporate, you know, your ideas or your suggestions as we move forward, but we're going to give this whole Portsmouth website a facelift.
One other question I had, Mr. Palmerchuk. Oh, how many, how many children attend the Youth Leadership Development Program, the one that you said was CBGB-funded and were concerned? How many kids is that?
So, it varies. We don't have a cap on it right now. We're currently around 20 youth, and the big thing is, this is, this is youth and their parents, right? We encourage a parental unit to be involved with it, not just youth, more of a holistic approach, wraparound program.
Okay. I'll, I'll take a breather.
Vice Mayor Moody, sure you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Palmerchuk. Quite a, quite a lineup here. I wish that I had that when I was a kid. We played marbles in the dirt, kicked the can, sometimes you got the can kicked, but that's another story. My question is similar to what my colleagues just mentioned, and how it's marketed and how we get the word out. I would think, too, the participants, the people participating this year, if we could get contact information, emails, phone numbers, where we could communicate early in the spring that, you know, when the, the signups are going to occur, the starting times and what have you, and also, are we getting word out to the churches, civic leagues about these programs that are available?
So, we take a step back and first reference the program guide. This is one of our marketing pieces. It gets mailed out to probably 40,000 residences four times a year. Everything that is on that presentation, everyone is in there, right? I know not everyone likes, likes paper anymore, a lot of, a lot of people like digital, so it is, it is on our website, which, you know, we try to keep updated as best as we can, and then we utilize social media as well. But, specifically for churches, we have a list of church contacts that we've established over the years, so we do make sure that we reach out to them so they're aware, along with the civic leagues.
And is there anything on our public access channel to reference the, the programs and the links?
So, I know PCTV does a good job of making sure that information gets out. Typically, what I see is more highlighting a specific program here and there, not necessarily a whole host of programs, and here's a link for it, which is something we can look into.
And how about social media?
Yes, we rely on social media. Parks and Recreation has its own social media accounts, and then we also ask the city to share it on their accounts.
Very good. Terrific program.
Mr. Palmerchuk, I can't thank you enough for your programming for the special needs children. I can tell you that there's a nice little group of kids who look forward to going to the therapeutic center every single day, so, and your folks there do a great job. I also noticed that some of the programming that is not specifically geared to special needs kids, they're being accommodated in these, in these spaces, and that's been very well-received in the community, so I want to thank you for that as well. But, I do have a question about some of the adults looking for flag football, kickball, and softball programming. Do you have any of that anymore?
So, we don't have adult flag football. We do have kickball right now.
Okay.
It is, it is currently going on, it'll end here in July.
Okay.
And they will pick back up again in the fall.
Got it. And that's on our, that's on your website and your programming?
Yes.
Okay. And then, softball?
Adult softball, yes, that's also in the program guide. Adult softball, I believe, will end next week, is their last, their last Sunday that they'll be doing that.
Okay.
And then, we have a separate church league that'll be just ended up in, at the end of June.
Okay.
Fall, we'll also have adult softball in the fall as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thanks again for everything.
Hugel, sure you have the floor?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate all that you and your team do. Are there any summer camps that have openings right now for the rest of the summer?
So, as far as Parks and Recreation Summer Camps?
Yeah.
We, we fill up the second day of registration.
And that's why I'm asking, because I, I think that word went around, and then people threw up their hands, and so, if, if you have no shows... And so, if, if you have no shows, how, how do you get the word out that somebody who was turned away gets the opportunity to come take that seat? Or is it too late? You're just out of luck?
No, so we, we compile a waiting list as part of our registration system, which we're, we're still updating. But we have a list of roughly 700 individuals on it right now on the waiting list.
Okay, so that was, that was going to be my follow-up question. So, so you've got 700 kids that aren't in summer camp that wanted to be. What would we need to do to provide capacity for those kids? Do you know which summer camps they, presumably, you know, which, which camps they wanted to be in? And what, what do we do to, to figure out for budget purposes next year, getting more staffing, getting more whatever, in, in order to accommodate the kids that got turned away?
So, there's two questions I'd like to respond to. The first one is what, you asked what happens when, when we have no shows?
Yeah.
And we did have that, especially this year when camp was free again. We, we think you had a lot of parents signing up just to make sure they had a spot somewhere. That might not have been where they wanted to have their child go, but they had a spot somewhere. So, after the first week, we started seeing who was not showing up, contacted those families and asked them if they had planned to, or maybe they're on vacation, maybe something happened. And then we're starting to add from the waitlist as those families drop off. For next year, if we wanted to expand our biggest resource and our biggest cost is staff, we try to keep a 1 to 12 ratio, right? One staff to 12 kids. Lower if possible, but it's usually not possible. So, we, we need additional funding for part-time staff to be able to boost those numbers and potentially need to look at some additional brick and mortar buildings to hold those in.
That's right. So, what, could we use rising seniors for staff?
We, we can and do already through the Youth Season Summer Program.
So, we got interns all around the building?
Yes.
And while I'm sure they're learning fascinating things about how City Hall works, I bet they'd have more fun if they were out at the rec center leading kickball or softball.
We probably have two-thirds of those youth right now.
Okay.
In the, in the summer camps helping out.
Okay.
As with, with youth, some have had jobs before, some have had not. So, a lot, there's a lot, a large learning curve for some of these individuals. To be able to count that as a one-staff person to 12 kids, usually you can't, usually you have to pair them with an adult staffer.
Yeah.
But it, it is something that we could look into expanding though.
And do you guys get information from other folks running summer camps in the city to pull all of the summer camp picture together, your summer camps plus everybody else? Or where, where do the other summer camps go to, to advertise? Kind of every, every activity for themselves right now, isn't it?
I don't know that we have a somewhere aggregate for all summer camps.
I mean, Wavy advertises that you can go on their website, and they've collected inputs from, from summer camps all around Hampton Roads. But, you know, we're trying to serve our kids. My fear is we got summer camp spots open that, and we got kids that are stuck doing nothing, and, and we just haven't figured out how to make the matches. And to that point, so, so the, the fact that you're answering, we got to go to portsmouthparks.com. So, so, Mr. Manager, with your IT background, can we figure out how to, how to have one landing place? Because there's Portsmouth Parks, there's Portsmouth Events, there's, there's all these ancillary places that you got to go to find out what the heck's going on if you want to participate in things around the city. And maybe they're all nicely hot-linked on the city webpage, but...
We, we traditionally don't link up a whole lot of things off of our webpage, and that's on purpose not by mistake, because people don't take care of their information well.
Yeah.
And we don't want to be the one that send you there when there's nothing there, you know what I mean? So, we, we're a rule particularly about putting those links on our site. I don't know. I, I don't know that we've tried to be an aggregate again for all things Portsmouth. We can look into that. There's some challenges there that we'll have to overcome. One is how, how do we make sure that we get in that information? How do we know the information is correct? And how do, how do we know it's updated regularly? I don't really want to put one of our staff in charge of making sure that your event is actually listed correctly, you know what I mean?
I do.
So, yeah, we, we can look at that, but there's some hurdles we need to overcome to make sure that, that happens correctly.
Okay. And then on a related thing, so, so Ms. Matthews is working in Portsmouth United to build this app that is, and what she described was see, click, fix for crime. But one of the things that I think your Chicago app had was a place on their equivalent that did consolidate information for kids with the notion, if we're, we're trying to attack crime before it happens, so let's make it easy for our kids to find things to do that are healthy. It's not clear to me exactly what she's going to have on the, on the Portsmouth United app, but sure seems like that would be a great place to make some of these connections for kids' activities so that we get in front of the problem through Portsmouth United instead of fixing the problem when they land in jail.
Yeah, again, that's something we can take a look at. Trying to, trying to manage events around that you don't actually manage.
Right.
Is kind of a problem for us, but I'm, I'm sure there's a solution that we can try to put in place though.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Palmerchuk, for, for our teenagers, I frequently am asked a question by our young people, you know, there's, what is there to do after the activities, after the work? What are we providing for that, that, that young teenage group in the way of activities, whether that be social gatherings, maybe put a roller rink in place somewhere? But what are we doing for those, those young people beyond the programming you have today?
So, beyond what we have today, other than making sure that we link them up with other like-minded teenagers, we do have several, I guess you can call them gatherings, that we, we try to set up throughout the summertime and during the school year. But really, the rec centers are their, their safe haven, and a lot of them take advantage of the drop-in at Sportsplex at, at J. Parker Rec Center, in addition to taking advantage of the team camp, the extended hours at Cavalier Manor Neighborhood Facility. Those, those are things we really have in place right now. There are some smaller programming pieces we have at Paradise Creek and Hoffler Creek. So, we're, we're still working on it and trying to get that built up even more.
Thanks. And the other thing in addition to that, so, you know, when I was a young teenager, we, we liked to roller skate. And we used to have a roller skating rink here in Portsmouth, I remember, a long time ago, over there off of Hodges Ferry somewhere.
There's a roller rink.
There you go. And I think young people still like to roller skate. Is it, is it possible that we could set up a roller skating night, maybe at the rec center for our young people? Kind of like make it a circular roller skating rink on the gym floor? Or do we tear up the gym floor? I, I don't know what that is, but, but, but just an idea. That's one idea. And the other idea is, you know, I've seen some, some information about for our young people extending perhaps the social interaction at some of our facilities. When I say extending the hours, some cities, some localities have opened up their place. I think we used to have a nighttime basketball program that went on to about 11:00 PM? Because we have a curfew.
Yes.
For our youth. And I think the curfew is at 11:00 PM. Is that correct?
It, it is. Nighthawk basketball does still take place.
Okay.
At the Sportsplex, but it's geared more towards your 18 to young 20-year-olds. And that was open until 1:00 AM.
Okay, okay. But I guess what do we have, like, in terms of something like that? Is there something for maybe the, the 13 to 17-year-olds?
Currently, we don't have anything that, that would fit that description.
Right. And, and that's an area, I think, if we can get young people to kind of interact and be in a safe environment, because we see where some of our violence is occurring in that age group, and kind of getting them together with some adult supervision, to kind of give them some structure, and some fun, right? Maybe an arcade night, maybe bring in a bunch of arcade games and have them play arcade games and give prizes for, I don't know, just an idea to create more youth activities in that gap, you know, where they think they're grown and they're doing grown-up things. But we definitely want to have adult supervision. Just a thought. But you can get back to us on that. Excuse me?
Is there still a roller skating park or something?
No. There's not a roller skating rink in Portsmouth. And I was thinking, you know, how we made the basketball court for the Ballin' on the River, we rented the basketball court. Perhaps we could rent like a floor and have just a roller skating night, and we could do that outside. I mean, we've got Festival Park, we've got the Pavilion, just an idea. And that could bring out everybody.
We've, we've actually had that idea in Parks and Rec for a couple of years, trying to make it work where we can find a location that's not going to tear up our facilities.
Sure.
But there, there are, there are some ways we can look into that and make that happen, I think.
And I, I just think that's fun, when you can bring young people and families together with supervision. We just don't have enough of that interaction with adults and young people and just having a good time. You guys are doing a phenomenal job, and I, I, I'm, I'm really hopeful and I'm very excited because I hear feedback from people in the city, you know, what, what is there to do for our children? And as you all can see, we have a lot to do for our children, but we can also improve.
Yes.
But the, the whole thing is messaging, and we know that we have to message on that. But I would agree with my colleagues, we can all be better ambassadors, right? And informing us, and by the way, I get this every quarter and I put it on my refrigerator. So, just as an FYI, you may want to put it on your refrigerator too. Thank you. Thank you and your team. You're doing a amazing job.
Thanks, sir.
Next, next presentation.
Thank you, Mark. That was a lot of information, a lot of good information. So, thank you again for the work that you and your team are doing on this. The next presentation is City Park Reimagined to get some direction on where to go and how to move this project forward. Mr. Palmerchuk?
Thank you. So, I had a brief opportunity at the council retreat this year to kind of lay this seed. And like I said, I did need some additional guidance and feedback from the council on how to move forward. So, again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you all tonight. So, we will go right into it. Tonight, through the presentation, we will give an overview of the historical timeline of how we ended up here, what deliverables we currently have in our possession, what the three-part concepts are right now, it's part of those deliverables, how we got here with the public feedback, and specifically survey results versus the public meeting feedback, the current status of this project. We'll touch on what progress delays we have had, and then hopefully have a clear direction to complete this process. My goal is to complete it by the end of December of this year. So, moving forward, historical timeline, how did we get here? Believe it or not, we actually started back in August of 2020 in the throes of COVID. And at that point, a lot of, of all of our meetings were still virtual. But that was phase one kickoff. It started with data collection. It started with stakeholder interviews, which included council at that time. It included the school board at that time. It included department directors and public schools administration as well. We had a public outreach campaign, consisted of virtual meetings, public meetings, surveys, along with a website. We got to some initial planning and development of our three initial concepts. Phase one deliverables, which we received, there was a website landing page. It is still active, reimaginecitypark.com. We had social media materials that were provided for us, along with press releases. We had an analysis of the golf course done, golf courses at City Links. Again, we had the, the public and virtual meetings. We were able to get topographical surveys, phase one site assessment, and amenity assessment. And then those three initial concepts with cost estimates. That was kind of part of phase one and phase two together. But those three concepts were to retain the golf course as is and make improvements to it. The estimated costs were anywhere between 10 and 13.4 million. And keep in mind, all of these estimated costs, that would be if we decided to go with every single amenity that was listed as a possibility, which is not likely.
Sure.
Second was to repurpose the golf course. That was, repurposes it for events, for walking trails, for dog parks, different things of that nature, basically completely get rid of it. That assessment was anywhere between 12 and a half to 16.9 million.
Can I ask a question? Did that, did that, did that option include moving the boat, 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 boat ramp or wherever?
It, it did. That, that was an option for all three of them at one point. And when I say that, it's an option, doesn't have to be done on any of them.
Sure.
Be included on any of them. But yes, that was one of the options, is to move the boat ramp location instead of facing where it is now, to actually face it to the west, and would have created some, some additional challenges.
Right. That's, that's what I was...
Water, water's not deep enough there, so we would have to do some dredging.
Right. And it would be an ongoing process with the dredging, probably every four years.
Correct.
Which could be pretty expensive.
Correct.
I got you. That, that's what I, I just wanted my mind to...
Yes, sir.
Be reintroduced to that.
You got it. Then the third option was the hybrid concept. So, that included retaining the driving range portion of the golf course, but getting rid of the course itself, in addition to some, some other additional amenities. So, again, real, real high overview concept. This is the retain golf course version. It did include the boat ramp being improved in its current location, adding some breakwaters out there to help with, with the water coming in and affecting the current boat ramp. It included a living shoreline, some resiliency efforts around, extended the pokey-smoky route, included a couple of additional multipurpose courts, bathroom by the triple shelter, and upgrades, significant upgrades to the golf course and the Pro Shop, right? This is to make sure if we're going to retain it, let's do it right.
Mr. Palmerchuk, did that also include a additional entrance to the park? Because I know that some of these options included additional entrance.
It included a realignment of the main entrance.
Okay.
Did not have an additional one, no.
Okay. But, but some of the options, I think, did. Like, there was another entrance if we did the walking park or something.
There was one option if we got rid of the golf course, it would have been a separate egress, but not necessarily a separate entrance.
Correct.
So, if we had events, we would have two points of egress coming out.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The no-golf concept, again, we touched a little bit on it, but it had a large space for events, for large-scale events. Our currently largest space that we have is Festival Park. We get 5,000 people out there and you're shoulder to shoulder, right? So, we were looking at another potential space where if we wanted to have large-scale events, this might be one of those. It included additional parking, the egress route that we mentioned, and then another large area by the triple shelter where it is currently, but more for private gatherings. If people wanted to have weddings or receptions there, they could do that. There was a marsh boardwalk, the altered boat entrance that came into the park, dog park that consisted of roughly 24,000 square feet, picnic areas, athletic courts, disc golf course, improved restroom building, and several areas of the park to make sure we didn't have to rely on porta-potties, and a host of more trails that went throughout the park, upwards of three or four miles of trails. And then third concept again was the hybrid. This included the driving range, got rid of the course itself, but you had a lot of the same things that you have in the other two. So, you still had all the shoreline improvements, you had the breakwater, event space, additional parking spaces, bathroom buildings, improvements to the driving range, possibly even a lit driving range or a two-tiered driving range, more trails, and then a different location for boat traffic to go after they entered the park. So, survey results versus public meeting comments. Phase one and when we did phase two, we, we had our surveys, and we, we roughly got about 2,000 respondents, which is more or less 2% of the city, right? 2,000 respondents, which is more or less 2% of the city, right? We needed to make sure we get, we hit a number that was at least somewhat justifiable to be able to say, okay, here's what the city wants, here's what the public wants, let's move forward in that direction, here's our justification for it. So we did get, like I said, about 2,000 responses. You can see down the right and the left, they were about equal between residents and And then the golf course was, was a very hot topic, so you know, we asked if they did play golf in City Park. Again, whether it was total responses or residents only is very similar, negative over across the board, it's about an 80/20 split. We asked if the golf course was repurposed, would you use the park more? Again, about a 70/30 split versus total respondents and residents only. And then we kind of wanted, got some demographic information of who responded to the survey. Primarily, the, the largest age group was 51 and over, followed by your 31 to 40-year-olds, then 41 to 50-year-olds, and 18 to 30-year-olds was fourth, with last being under 18. Some of the survey results regarding amenities, and again, these are all possible amenities that we weren't trying to program the park to make sure there's no green space there, but some of them and some of the more popular ones were walking and jogging trails. That no matter who we talked to, they said that they would like to see more of that. Event space for public use, dog parks, athletic courts, environmental enhancements. Even though it's at the very bottom of this list right now, disc golf, we, we are currently seeing an explosion in disc golf in the nation as well, and I would say out of just random phone calls that we get in the department, that, that's one of them. Space for disc golf somewhere. So how did the survey results differ from the public meeting comments? They were really night and day, right? Our demographics of the folks that attended our public meetings were primarily elderly, older, they were current golf course users, and they were boat owners. That, that was the main folks that we got out there. So of course, when they come out, they're very passionate about their course, they want it to stay, and they, they said, do not get rid of it. You know, we use it daily. Very vocal, even had at least one of the, the gentlemen that attended come in front of council at one point over the past couple of years and read a, a three-page letter saying how he wanted to keep the golf course. And it, it is good for the elderly, it's good for youth, it's good for learners of the game. Typical golf courses, for those of you that, that are not traditional golfers, a lot of times you have to worry about your pace of play, right? And if you get too slow, of course Marshall comes along and says, you need to get it moving, let these people pass you, something like that. Don't have that issue here at City Park, right? You can, you can take your time and have a leisure league game of golf. And that's usually what you would see is who would come out there, more of those people who didn't necessarily take it seriously. Yes, they tried hard, but it was more about the leisure part of it. And of course, they, they were asking for golf course and driving range improvements and concern over events and egress of events into the neighborhoods there. So those were the public meeting attendees versus the survey results. Demographics, again, when we took them from the survey results, those were, those were taking at a lot of events, a lot of our sporting events, and you had primarily African-American respondents who were younger, between 20 and 40, had children, so that that was the difference. And it's not a, it's not an easy point of contention, but that is the main point of contention right there, is that the current park is roughly 40 acres, golf course comprises about 52 acres. So the idea when we were tasked with this was, let's, let's truly reimagine the park. What can we do if we have more space? What can we do if we just keep it the way it is? So our current status, we are still in phase two. Phase two has kind of stalled out. We have conducted additional surveys and had one public meeting this past October. There was no change in the surveys or the public meeting as far as the feedback we received. And the, the meeting had a lot of the golfers, the surveys had a lot of non-golfers. Golf course analysis that was done back in '21 basically stated that we're subsidizing each round of golf by between $17 and $20, meaning that our costs are not covering what it costs to play there and maintain it. Progress delays, we, we will say, other than COVID, which was a little bit of it, it was mainly change in leadership and change in direction. Had seven different city managers in that timeframe, so as you can imagine, and then several different iterations of council as well. So things changed back and forth, back and forth, that's why we kind of got stuck here where we're at today. We also had a very difficult time soliciting enough responses. Again, we were looking for that 2,000 mark. People just don't want to take surveys these days, so I mean, you, you basically had to be right there in their face at these events and say, please take a survey, here's a trinket for your time, to eventually get to where we needed to be. So what we are requesting is some, some decisive direction to be able to complete this process. So for next steps, concept realization, we're looking to have one final concept and have those amenities actually finalized as well. It's not going to be everything that was on the list, of course, we know that's not feasible. But based on feedback to see what we really need to do for this 10, 20, 30-year plan for City Park. We need support for it. Also, once we feel like we have that one final concept, come back in front of council to get the blessing to really say, move forward, put a stamp on it, here's our plan for City Park. We would also need to identify funding sources. There are options out there, public, private partnerships. One of the deliverables that we received actually contained a lot of available grants that are out there for a lot of these different amenities, especially when you consider the resiliency in the shoreline. So there, there's options out there. And of course, it could also go corporate grant, sponsorship for certain areas. Just for comparison purposes, we're charging right now roughly $17 for adults and $15 for youth to come play at, at City Park for, for a round of nine holes. Bydaway, we're at anywhere between $39 and $53, depending on the time of the day, the day of the week that you're coming out there. Right? So it is significant, and those rates have not been raised at City Links since I've been here in 2014. So depending on what we do, whatever the decision is, my recommendation, if we do keep the golf course, is to look at those rates and look at possibly raising those rates to help offset some of the maintenance costs.
Councilwoman Thomas, you have a floor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmercheck. And I know this has been in the works for quite some time, and I do think it's necessary, but I thought that one point we were, again, this probably goes to delay due to changing leadership and so forth, I thought we were going to pivot and kind of go towards maybe looking at the development of aquatic center, water center at the Sportsplex and table this, based on some of the conversation we had at our retreat. Is that, has that changed, that, have we changed direction or do we want to kind of put some closure on this before moving to another project since so much planning has gone into this already? Just trying to make sure I understand which direction we were moving in based on past conversations.
Senator Carter, you have a floor, sir?
Yes, ma'am. We did have that discussion. This is a project that, like he's talking about, it's been on the books for quite some time. What I'd like to do is either move it or let's move on.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And stop spending, and if we're not going to do it, that's fine, let's just stop spending time on it and we'll put our time and our energy and our money in a project that can be supported. So that's what we're all today, just trying to figure out is, does this council have the appetite to move this forward? If not, please let us know, we'll leave along and we'll move on.
Okay. So it's, we're at the point of making decisions to move forward with the plans, the estimates, because I'm sure those estimates, the dollar amount could change if we keep delaying, right?
It will.
Or if we're going to prioritize our, you know, efforts on this water park, water center somewhere else. Okay. All right. So I'll put that up to discussion and for the rest of us. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor Moody?
I thought some of that discussion was to, let's make improvements to City Park, but not, not do a major makeover. And I recall the discussion on Aquatic Park, which I think we, we need to go, if we're going to do anything big, I think it needs to be that direction. You know, here we are, waterfront city, and I dare say that a lot of our kids in Portsmouth can't swim, and our schools, if they have swim teams, have to go elsewhere to practice. So, I mean, City Park is nice, I don't want to neglect it, but I thought we had discussed about, let's, let's improve some of the things that need improving, like the boat ramp, some of the amenities there, shelters, grilling facilities, certainly the restroom facilities, they're antiquated and awful. You got to cross the street from one side of the park to, to go to the restroom, which that can be improved without spending millions and millions of dollars. So I would, I would lean more towards supporting the aquatic park. And I thought we had a similar discussion in, in Williamsburg, actually.
Councilman Ugel, you have the floor?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like my two colleagues who have already spoken, and I get it, you need, you need to come to closure, so it's appropriate, I think, that we have this discussion and say, okay, we, we don't want to spend $16 million on a third rail that's going to get us all electrocuted. So let's spend, as, as the vice mayor said, let's spend a little bit of money fixing the things that need fixing, maybe consider making some amenity improvements. But if we're going to spend $16 million, that ought to be a down payment on what we're going to do at the Sportsplex, because I think it was the consensus at the retreat, that's where the investment, the, the big investment ought to be made. And so, so let's call the question and, and formally shift gears so that you have some council direction on where the focus ought to be.
Can I add one thing in there? What is your appetite for raising the cost of, if we're going to keep the golf course? Raising the cost so that the golf course become not totally self-sufficient, but more self-sufficient?
Absolutely. I think that needs to be done, since, would Mark say, since we have increased the pricing since 2014?
At least, yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. Needs to be adjusted.
Those things go together if we're going to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilwoman Bryan?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, and I agree, and I, it does feel like a big part of this discussion revolves around the golf course and then the, the Bydaway golf course and what are we doing here? And I'll say again, I, I think we have an opportunity here to be a place that develops youth golf, and it's being underutilized right now. Councilwoman Thomas and I have talked about, I'm plugged into it because of knowing people who golf and friends, and, and Councilwoman Thomas has asked me, how do I, how do I get my kids in there? So it's kind of working that way right now, where we have an opportunity with the links to do more youth programming. It is a comfortable place where you can take your kids and not feel like pressured by other professional golfer, you know, competitive golfers. And that's a really, really rare thing. I mean, we can't really compete with other golf families unless we go all the way out to the beach, and it's 45 minutes to get to another team, and we just don't do it. So one of the things that Adam does is we just have kind of in-house Bydaway competitions, which are great. It's great because it's very low pressure and that's what kids need. But there's an opportunity there, if we keep the golf course at, at City Park, to, to develop that more. And it's, it's a great skill to have and it's unique and it, it could be something that Portsmouth is known for. On the PGA Junior League, we might be one of the few Portsmouth families that is part of that league. There are a lot of families from other cities, Chesapeake and Suffolk that come over, so it's a draw for sure. And if we have that opportunity to expand it, at the same time, addressing the seniors that also enjoy that size course, that, that smaller par three course. So it's, it seems like that's a big part of this discussion. I definitely think raising the fees and, and giving incentives for memberships and family memberships and things like that is a way to also reorganize the fee structure. But it does feel like if there's not, if, if 2% of Portsmouth is responding to this survey, okay. And to your presentation earlier, Paradise Creek and Hoffler Creek are fantastic. I mean, they are beautiful places to go for a walk. They're shady, they're interesting, you can eat the berries, I think. So we, we do, we do have that, if you were the guide. We do have those spaces, those places. Yeah, I'm not a boater, but I do think that the boating conversation was an important one also, so if that's an upgrade. And, and the bathrooms.
Yeah, we, we've got some, I, I sent Mr. Palmercheck some information about these automated bathrooms that kind of take care of themselves, which I'm not sure what the cost is going to be yet, that may be prohibitive, but we'll, we'll see and if we can, we can state some of those things that would, just update it and keep it clean at the same time.
Yeah. I, I do love the idea of focusing on the aquatics piece and adding that to our offerings. That would be wonderful.
Councilman Tillage?
Thank you. You may mention in the presentation about disc golf. Due to, due to City Park's golf course being underutilized, could that be a part of the minor renovations that's taken a portion of that golf course to do the disc golf? Would it magically cost that much to do that?
A portion of the golf course, it's already a nine-hole course. There's no, you portion anymore of it, it's not really a golf course.
Well, there's a section of the park that disc golf could be incorporated in?
Yeah, we may be able to use some type of engineering to kind of lay out a course for that, but I don't, I don't know that.
Don't they do, don't they do like a soccer golf too out there?
Foot golf goes along with it, yes. However, disc golf and, and regular golf are not compatible activities at the same piece of land, right? Other locations at the park, perhaps, but not concurrently with the golf course.
So, so a couple, couple of observations. Number one, as it relates to City Park, I like the links. You know, I walk the links with my golf bag, and so I get an exercise. It's a good place. I think that what my colleagues have, have demonstrated here today is exactly where we need to go. We need to improve the property for sure. I don't think we need to focus on it as much as we do the aquatic center and the Sportsplex, and I'll tell you why in a minute, but I, I think that's the appropriate approach for City Park today. One of the things I did want to ask you, when you talked about the opportunity to have bigger acts or, or events out there, now I know by the water and if you bring that, bring, bring that slide back up when you show the property. So right there. So that area to the right, as you enter, that, that, that backs up to the water, I know there's a statue there, there's a, there's a statue on those grounds. Couldn't not some of that be opened up perhaps for an entertainment? I know there's the parking, I don't know how much square footage that is though, but, but in any event, I, I know we have the little area where we have like the stage, and, and when you say upgraded for bigger perhaps opportunities, would that be a consideration, that front part?
It would. It's not going to hold as many people as Festival Park would hold.
Okay.
And the other issue we run into out there, if we do an event, which we've had several, is parking.
No, it's, it's true.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's true.
It's the real issue, right?
We've had to shuttle people in and it's only one entrance and one egress. So I get that and it could cause some challenges, so that's fine. So I'm fine with, I support what my colleagues are saying. Certainly need to upgrade some of the amenities that are there. As I had said before, I think we need some more activity on the front part of the water, right? Off of the seawall, off of the rail there, if we could put something that maybe some paddle boats or something, where people could actually enjoy. paddle boats or something, where people could actually enjoy the water, right? Other than boaters, there may be some folks who just want to take a leisurely kind of paddle boat around, just some things like that, perhaps in, in the upgrade. But I think that the dollars, if we're talking about upgrading and finishing what we've already started, is the Sportsplex. And let me go to there right now. So we've already invested the city. I, I know back in, when I first came on council, we, we had invested a lot of money in, in the Sportsplex. And there was a vision for the Sportsplex. And I think where we are today, making that the central hub for water activity, for sports activity, for spaces for seniors to have activities, that whole place creating that, that location is, is really important. And for all of the reasons that were discussed. In addition to that, after we had our retreat, I spoke to some corporate sponsors who were interested in participating in a public-private partnership to make that Sportsplex happen. Perhaps some naming rights and other things, I think we can get there. I know that the Crox Center, not, not saying we're going to build a Crox Center, but I know when they finished that project, it was upwards of $90 million. Don't know what the project scope would be, but I think if we're going to focus our efforts, it needs to be that citywide recreation and aquatic center that really has a destination and drives all of our people there, in addition to providing those areas where our young people can swim. Interestingly enough, I had a meeting today with the Portsmouth YMCA, Shirley Sasser is representing them, Mr. Carter and I went there. And what were we talking about, sir?
Swimming lessons.
Swimming lessons. We were talking about a certain percentage of particularly minority children don't know how to swim. And that's a problem in a city that's surrounded by water. And, and the reason why I say minority children, because that's what the statistics say. And when a child drowns, more than likely, it is a minority child, and that's one of the causes. So I think focusing on getting that project done, I know it's going to take some heavy lifting, we're all going to have to do a lot of work, but that project could also serve, I think, the entire needs of our city. And so that would be my support that I would want to put behind it in terms of going forward.
Sir.
So, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So to maybe pile on, I guess I've lost track of where we are in redoing the ball fields at the high schools. But it seems that whatever we're doing there ought to play into what we decide we're going to do at the Sportsplex beyond the, you know, building a, the Aquatic Center at the Sportsplex. Because, because the ball field upgrades that are planned at the schools, that's big money, too. And so figuring out how we work collaboratively with the school system so that when we make those big investments, those fields aren't sitting empty except on Friday night during football season or, or Saturday afternoon for a soccer game. And, and that we don't spend money at the Sportsplex doing the same thing that we're getting ready to do with, with the high school fields to, to upgrade that facility. So I know there was some, some thought a while back that, that we were going to build out a Sportsplex that looked like the Virginia Beach Sportsplex to try to attract national level, this and that, to the city. It'd be crazy to spend the money at the high school fields and then turn around and, and look to spend the same money all over again.
Yeah, we take a look at that and see what collaboratively we can do as far as hosting events or things like that.
Yeah.
Virginia Beach lost money on that.
They did.
On that bill. Big money. $100s.
Yeah, also, you know, as a young black man, I like playing basketball, so, you know, we need a basketball court at this park somewhere.
That can be inside, sir.
Oh, we got a basketball court, Sportsplex. Mayor wants the roller skate on it, but we got a basketball court.
Okay. All right. We're good. All right. So, so thank you. No, we, we think that this is really comprehensive, and, and I know that you'll bring back some manager, I know you'll bring back some options, but I think this was a good conversation to have. But to your point in closing, we need to finish what we started. And I think councils before us invested in the Sportsplex, Vice Mayor Moody was here, and you guys had a vision. And, and we haven't completed that vision. So I think we need to go ahead in the best interest of our citizens to move that vision forward.
I have a problem. We accomplished what we came for, we, we know how to handle this now, so we'll move forward.
Thank you, sir. And thanks again, Mr. Palmancheck. I do want to acknowledge the work that you do as the leader of your department. These events that we have throughout our city, I hear a lot from our citizens, they're very happy with Sunset Thursday, with all the activities that you help from our seniors to our children. Your folks are engaged, and they're present, and it's appreciated.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So moving on to our next agenda item, if we could, city manager agenda review, and then we'll go into our council liaison reports. We do have a need, a need for a closed session after that.
Absolutely, sir. Just even, we have a couple of queries that's on the, on that one. Coast of Virginia developers requesting a use permit for the development of five town homes at 430, 436, and 442 Douglas Avenue. We also have C. Hogan's requesting a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment at 1805 Hodges Ferry Road. We have six ordinances on that for budget adjustments. First one is a hazmat response recovery fund appropriation for $9,234.99 for funding, funding from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. This fund is to support the city of Portsmouth as a lead agency for the South Side Regional Hazardous Material Team. We have an opioid settlement appropriation for $24,733.62 in opioid settlement funds received in June 2025. These funds will be allocated in the FY 2026 Health, Behavior Healthcare Services Fund. We have a new co-provision requesting IT purchases for contracts being, amend our ordinance to add a section 12.88 under Article Five Public Procurement. This new section aligns local procurement regulations with a 2025 amendment in the Virginia State Code, which nullifies any contract provision for IT goods or services that subjects the agreement to non-Virginia laws or out-of-state legal venues. We have a state-funded 1.5% bonus for constitutional officers and staff, an appropriation of $152,591 in state shared expense revenue to provide that one-time 1.5% salary supplement to constitutional officers and their employees. FY 26 Community Corrections and Pre-Trial Services Program looking to accept an appropriation of $676,663, $663 grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice into our FY 26 fund. These funds will support Portsmouth Community Corrections and Pre-Trial Services, which provide alternatives to incarceration for certain misdemeanors and non-violent felony offenses. And finally, a fund balance transfer for the Behavior Healthcare Service Fund to the 2026 Behavior Healthcare Service Fund budget. This fund will be, will support the acquisition of business software and modern office technologies for the Behavior Healthcare Services department. That's it.
May I ask a question, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I'm not, on 25198, can you help me understand, it says appropriating $138,000 of said amount to the judicial section? And have we historically as a city done that on the revenue appropriating money for the judicial section?
Yes.
I'm just, I just don't recall that. Maybe you've done it.
It's a normal budgeting section.
Okay. I just, I just didn't know that.
Yeah, this is that 1.5% increase.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I read the notes, I just wanted some clarification here.
We're accepting some from the state that they're sure of.
That's right.
We got to see if something also.
The increase for constitutional officers and staff?
Yes.
You included officers?
Well, that's what the, the language says.
Yes. What, what did the state provide to constitutional officers?
Well, they provide a total. They give it up between those, those employees. Now, when we, when we allocate that to the constitutional officers, they decide, you know, how they're going to give it up.
So this money is from the state?
That's right.
Yes.
Yep. It's from the General Assembly, they voted on it last session.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
It's just a reimbursement of sorts.
But the language says constitutional officers.
Yeah, because only the state supports the constitutional officers through the cop board. The courts, Circuit Court is supported by the locality in addition to the state. The other courts, the non-constitutional courts are not. It's just a compromise.
I know it's been a while, but there had been times where the city included constitutional officers in the general wage increases. Deborah probably remembers that, that, that goes back.
Goes back a long ways.
Long ways. Well, I've been here a long ways, as you have.
Yes, sir.
Can't speak to that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other council liaison reports? Seeing none, we do have a need to go into a closed session, so Council, Vice Mayor Moody, would you please read the closed session?
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-30711, A1, for the purpose of discussing the performance of council members.
You have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are in closed session.
For her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered, and the closed meeting just concluded.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?